For the record, it's 5:15 PM on March 22nd, 2018. The Wenatchee City Council is out of executive session. I'll call the meeting to order. First item is a pledge to our flag. Where are we at on turnzies? I don't even know. Please turn.
I'll do it.
Mark? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to Councilmember Kula. And for the record, we have six council members here, and Councilmember Huffaker is not here this evening. Consent items. The first item on our agenda this evening would be this evening's agenda vouchers and amendments from the previous meetings, and then a couple of agreements that we talked about in our work session last week.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt our consent items consisting of the agenda for this evening, vouchers and amendments from previous meetings, also to authorize the mayor to enter into an amended CHG agreement with the Washington State Commerce Department, and an amended sub-grant agreement with the Community Action Council to allow for a HIN funding increase of $30,500. Also for the council to authorize the mayor to enter into an amended CHG agreement with the Washington State Commerce Department, and an amended sub-grant agreement with the Women's Resource Center to allow a funding transfer between existing landlord liaison grant budget line items.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Harrell, to adopt the evening's consent items, including the agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, and two changes to some agreements with the Washington State Department of Commerce regarding some sub-referenced agreements. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience wishes to address the council on something that's not on today's agenda. We ask you to give us your name and address in three minutes. Yes, sir, Mr. Campbell. How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good.
I have some information to hand out. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You guys? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. My name's Brian Campbell. 1837 Jefferson Street. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Brian Campbell. As I said, 1837 Jefferson Street. As you can tell, I'm reading this. In response to Joe Morrison's request to the council to bring up the issue of districting again, I'd like to offer the following. First, I'd like to preface with the fact that I'm a board member of the United Neighborhood Association that has expressed their opposition to districting, but I applaud and support all of the efforts of the Electoral Process Committee, CAFE, and other individuals and groups that, as I, try and serve the underprivileged and underserved members of our fine community. The council, of which I was a member at the time, authorized the mayor to assemble Electoral Process Committee to look at all options for electing council members almost three years ago. I offered to serve on the committee but wasn't appointed. The mayor and some council members were afraid of the legal ramifications from the Yakima lawsuits from the ACLU. Yakima is a much larger community with a much higher Latino population, and hadn't elected a Latino to the council for 37 years in spite of attempts for Latino representation. Wenatchee's had Latino representation on the council for many years, and in the most recent election, Ruth Asparza, congratulations, defended her council seat against another Latino candidate. Wenatchee has welcomed Latino representation and encouraged it through public outreach, hiring a Latino public information officer, printing agendas in Spanish, and engaging the community. Latino representation on the Wenatchee City Council closely mirrors the percentage of registered Latino voters. Simply put, it appears that, out of fear, Wenatchee is trying to solve a problem we don't have. The Voters' Rights Act recently passed in Washington State that will allow cities a tool of choosing districting without the fear of violating federal law. This is a much-needed option for those cities that have a problem and need a solution. I was disappointed to recently hear the mayor on KPQ radio saying that Wenatchee could switch to districting or be sued. I believe that that fear mongering, and it's not true, and it puts the council in an untenable position. In my communications with the ACLU, I didn't get the impression that Wenatchee was even on the radar with the proactive actions that we're taking. Also, I attended many of the Electoral Process Committee meetings throughout, and not only didn't I see any evidence of switching from a council that's elected at-large to districting would help with the goal of increasing Latino representation on the council. The committee even eliminated the at-large option long before the end of their process and receiving irrelevant information for that decision. Several cities have voted to eliminate their districting election process and switch to at-large elections such as Bonny Lakes, Snohomish, Prosser, and Ellensburg. If the districting issue is brought up again for council action, please don't change the existing system that is setting such a good example for other cities. If you decide to consider a change, please let the citizens that elected you decide if they want to change the process by which they did so. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Anybody else wish to address the council?
Good evening. My name is George Turner. Live at 933 Northwestern Avenue. I'm here this evening to represent NCW, vets-serving vets, to give a little recognition to the mayor and to the council. If you wouldn't mind, Mayor, would you mind coming out here?
Yes.
We recently have undertaken, we bought all of the old street signs in Wenatchee. We're refurbishing them, and we're trying to see some of them to stay the way they are. Other ones that may change, but we want to see them stay here, and that's a project that we're doing. And I made, we have a little momentum here for you.
Oh, yeah.
When you're really doing this, that's good, but when you're not, you're frank.
Do you think people throw eggs at this pretty often?
This one, they will.
Yeah.
As I said, thank you, and our appreciation. And there's a little pole back here that you can, but that way... You can take this off and just set it on your desk or behind your desk.
Okay, let me take a photo.
That's great.
Yeah, he's...
Three. Well, three, three...
Thanks again, and thanks for everybody's support.
So, George, just to make it clear, so he went through the surplus auction that the city went...
He outbid you?
Outbid, you know, I didn't mean to be honest. But he's donating, he's spending all his time, and all the money's going back to the vets.
We are a total volunteer nonprofit. We have no paid employees. Hundred percent go to the veterans. We're known as the bunker. We really help a lot of people.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
All right, we have two presentations tonight. The first regarding the 33rd Annual Good Scout Award Honoree. Who's got that?
I have that one. Mayor, the proclamation for the 33rd Annual Good Scout Award Honorees, Eric and Kristen Holmberg. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America has been at the forefront of instilling timeless values in youth since its founding in 1910, and whereas the National Youth Movement has made serving others through its values-based program its mission, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America is committed to helping millions of youth succeed by providing the support, friendship, and mentoring necessary to live a happy and fulfilling life, and whereas Eric and Kristen Holmberg have worked tirelessly in committing their resources of time, talent, and capital of the Grand Columbia Council of the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Eric and Kristen Holmberg have worked tirelessly in committing their resources of time, talent, and capital to numerous community organization activities that work, that make our Wenatchee Valley a vibrant and healthy community. Therefore, now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim and designate Eric and Kristen Holmberg as the Grand Columbia Council's 33rd Annual Good Scout Award Honorees for their interest and dedication to instilling the timeless values of scouting, oath, and law in our Wenatchee Valley Boy Scouts and in making our community better. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 23rd day of March 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thanks, Mike. And if you get that to Allison, I'll make sure I get it to Eric and Kristen. I believe the banquet's next Wednesday or Thursday, and I'll be going to that. For those of you that don't know, and most of us remember Scoutavista up near, Eric and Kristen Holmberg basically saved that for the region. It was under a substantial amount of debt from the Yakima region of Boy Scouts, and they raised a million-plus dollars to buy it out of debt from the Boy Scouts folks to keep it in our community. So, very worthy award for them. All right, next proclamation is regarding National Crime Victims Week. Who's got that?
I have that one, Your Honor.
Councilmember Bailey?
Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 26 million crimes each year, and crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status, and whereas many victims face challenges in finding appropriate services, including victims with disabilities, young victims of color, deaf and hard-of-hearing victims, LGBTQ victims, tribal victims, elder victims, victims with mental illness, immigrant victims, teen victims, victims with limited English proficiency, and others. And whereas the entire community has a role to play, and whereas involving survivors helps victims, service providers, and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of under- and unserved victims who seek assistance and justice, and whereas engaging victims' communities and learning from leaders about their unique needs helps service providers foster a supportive and culturally relevant atmosphere in which victims seek help and healing, and whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will help a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas victims know best how to direct and manage their own lives and true recovery from crime will incorporate a victim's cultural, religious, economic, social, and personal interests, and whereas with the full weight of their community and victim services providers behind them, survivors will feel empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and shame without fear of judgment, and will feel understood and worthy of support. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 1 through 7, 2018, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the City of Wenatchee is hereby dedicated to building partnerships with trusted sources of support, including community leaders, religious groups, schools, and other agencies to better reach and serve all victims of crime, no matter their community. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, as Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1 through 7, 2018, as Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm the City of Wenatchee's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 22nd day of March 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thanks, Jim. Who's here? Forget that. Are you here? How are you? I think you come over time in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
You bet. And for those of you that don't know, Sage has had quite a little week.
Yeah, I'm not with Sage.
Yes, I know, but I was just gonna, I wanted to make a point, they do crime victim work, and they've got a national award, and yeah.
Yeah.
I know, wasn't that cool?
They have business, nonprofit of the year.
Well, not only that, but they also got an award from our friends back in Washington, DC. I don't know what it was.
Oh, they have, yeah.
Yep, Representative Reckert. Yes.
Yeah, we share the role with them, and it's good. They do great work.
Oh, thanks for all the work you do.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for that. All right. Action items regarding our public records policy. Danielle.
Yes, hello. Danielle Marchant, one of the Assistant City Attorneys. So, our office is recommending that the council pass the resolution proposed, which adopts a public records policy for the City of Wenatchee. I don't know how familiar the council is with public records, but it's been getting a lot of press recently with the legislature trying to opt themselves out, and then the governor vetoing that. The public records policy that we put forward will kind of supplement the code provisions that are already enacted by the city, and it supplements them in that it provides a more detailed procedure on how city staff and citizens can go to and look as a guideline for how these public records requests are going to be processed through the city, when a request is going to require a deposit for funds, when a request is going to be deemed abandoned, what city staff has to do in response to an abandoned request, and some, and things like that. So, your code provides an overall structure, and then the policy provides the meat on that structure. So, are there any questions?
No. I don't have any questions. Any questions for Danielle? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2018-15, adopting a policy for the processing of public records requests.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Asparza, to adopt Resolution 2018-15, adopting a policy for the processing of public records requests. Discussion? Are any questions for Danielle, while we have her here? I know there's a whole list of exemptions that I went through, and I think Danielle wishes there were more.
There are more, under the federal statute. But it would be hard for our office to go through every single federal code section and pull them out. But somebody did it for the state, RCWs, and most cities adopt the table that we attach to the policy.
Yeah, I assume that's what keeps us in line with the changes that came out of the legislature this...
Yeah, yeah, every year, the code reviser publishes a new list.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Danielle.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle.
All right, we've got a couple of bid openings. So, first regarding McKittrick Street. Jacob, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. I am here for two items tonight. Tim, I think, I was gonna pull up the PDF for you guys to see. Okay. I will take... Okay, so I've got a couple exhibits here. This one is a little bit tough to see, and I apologize. The next one will be a little bit easier for you guys to see what we're proposing here. First off, though, for the McKittrick Street project, this is a partially state-funded through the Transportation Improvement Board project that we've been working on over the last year and a half, two years. So, what we are doing is rebuilding McKittrick Street between Pine and Wenatchee Avenue. As part of that project, we will take the roadway section and create a three-lane section, so two three-lanes and a two-way left-turn lane. In addition to that, we'll widen out a little bit to accommodate that reconfiguration, add bicycle lanes, and then sidewalks on both sides of the street. Also, we'll upgrade the storm infrastructure through that corridor. So, if you're looking at the graphic here, it's split so that the top one shows from Pine Street, working east towards the avenue, and then the bottom shows the continuation of that down to Wenatchee Avenue. So, you can see some of the striping and sidewalks that we're proposing there. We put the project out to bid and opened bids on March 9th. We had a total of four bids. Hurst Construction is our lowest responsible bidder at a total cost of $866,415.65. We are recommending that we award this project to Hurst Construction. In terms of the expenses, it's actually about 2% lower than what the 2018 budget had anticipated. Unfortunately, though, our grant funding wasn't quite as strong as we had anticipated, so there is a little bit more city funding going towards this project than was originally budgeted. In terms of schedule, we plan to start midway through April. It's an 85-day contract, so we should be finished towards the end of August. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
I don't have any questions. I do know that at the Public Works Committee, we did discuss some of the right-of-way acquisitions in there, and we got a little over budget on some of our right-of-way, but we did that in order to get the project started, because otherwise we were going to be at it for a while. Any other, any questions for Jacob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to award the contract for the construction of the McKittrick Street rebuild, project number 1501, to Hurst Construction LLC, in the amount of $866,415.65, and authorize the mayor to approve the construction contract.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harrell, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor's signature on the construction contract for the McKittrick Street rebuild for Hurst Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob, and on to Red Apple Road.
Yep, so I'm gonna sound a little bit like a broken record here. So, this one, Red Apple Road between Miller Street and Okanagan, is also a partially state-funded through the Transportation Improvement Board project. We've been working on this one since the beginning of 2017. In terms of improvements here, you can see, again, the top view here is starting at Miller Street, working east towards Okanagan. We're installing a mini roundabout at the intersection of Red Apple and Miller Street, redoing sidewalks on the north side of the street, and as well as sidewalks at the intersections on the south side of the street. Parking will be reduced to one side of the street to accommodate new bike lanes. In addition to that, there's a second page here that shows the continuation as you work, again, east towards Okanagan Avenue. There's that. I'll go back to the first page, since that one's got a little bit more going on. RH2 is our design consultant on this project. Exactly the same as McKittrick Street, we opened bids on March 9th. We had a total of three bids for this particular project. Pipkin Construction is our low responsible bidder at a total of $1,496,687.1. Overall, budget-wise, we're 9% below the overall 2018 budget, and then that holds true with city funding as well. We're below what we had anticipated. Similar construction schedule, this one will be 90 days rather than 85, but again, beginning in April, ending towards the end of August, and staff recommends awarding this project to Pipkin Construction. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Is this one that had a bunch of right-of-way that was needed acquisition on, or very little?
Very little on this one. This one, there's a couple temporary construction easements, but otherwise, we were out of the...
In-city right-of-way.
Yeah, exactly. Which is fantastic.
Yeah, makes it a little easier, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Any questions for Jacob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for the City Council to award the contract for the construction of Red Apple Road Preservation Project 1607 to Pipkin Construction in the amount of $1,496,687.1, and authorize the mayor to approve the construction contract.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harrell, to authorize the mayor's signature on the Red Apple Road Construction Preservation Project Number 1607 to Pipkin Construction. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. Thanks. Jessica, your third reiteration for Coleman Oil.
Yes. Good evening. Jessica Shaw, Environmental Manager for the Public Works Department. Tonight, we have another temporary discharge agreement for Coleman Oil. They have been working very hard to continue to assess the limits of the contamination, also working on a feasibility study, and continuing to pump groundwater out of the recovery wells that they installed last summer, and about once or twice a month, discharge some of that treated groundwater into the city sewer system. So, they are now under an agreed order with the Department of Ecology, which gives them a specific timeline to get all of these assessments and studies done, to come up with, okay, what do we need to be, to do to be done with this project and have it considered to be cleaned up? So, based on that schedule from Department of Ecology, I'm estimating they probably have about 18 months to two years' worth of work left to be able to get to that point where they can say, here's what's gonna happen with the site. So, in the past, we were doing six-month temporary agreements with them, so tonight we're just recommending the only change to the agreement would be that we give them a year. I think after a year, they should have a pretty good idea of what's next, and that'll, you can bring it back and discuss again whether or not, whether or not it'll continue on, or if that will be the end of it, so.
And we're not having any issues with Coleman Oil in terms of the stuff they're bringing us? It's meeting all of our requirements for pretreatment and all of that?
That is correct, yes. All of the batches that they've submitted have been well below the limits that we set for them. They've been very responsive and providing all of the data that we asked for, and when we've been missing things, they've promptly provided the missing information, so they've been, they've been great to work with, and we haven't seen any issues with the discharges.
Jessica, on the, I guess, you know, this kind of becoming a, you know, the gift that keeps on giving kind of thing.
Yes.
In terms of our, I guess, our costs, they're being charged X amount of dollars to do the discharge itself, but in terms of staff time for monitoring and doing all that, are we recovering our costs through this process, or are we...
I believe we are. We are charging them more for their discharges than what we're actually doing treatment of, since their discharge is basically clean water that they've removed all the contaminants from, and so we're not providing a whole lot of treatment for the water. They're discharging, it is mostly an administrative task. They're taking advantage of the fact that we have a wastewater discharge permit to the Columbia River, and this is their means of returning that water back into the waterways. So, I feel like we're not spending a whole lot of time with this. It usually only requires maybe about four hours of staff time a month, and we have been occasionally sending someone out just to take a look at what they're doing, make sure they're still following that, and that usually is only maybe a half hour to an hour's worth of time, so.
Good. Thank you.
Not too much time.
And when they deposit into our system, they just find a spot, and we tell them where they're putting into our normal, they don't dump it right in, right? They find a spot?
They do have, so the interesting part about the Coleman Oil is, prior to the oil sheen showing up on the river and all the other events that came out of that, they were a city water and sewer, or water and stormwater customer, but they had a septic tank for their offices down on Shalala Street. So, one of our initial conditions for them was to put in a sewer lateral. They've since, as you may have noticed, tore down the office building and a lot of the other buildings on the site, so pretty much it is just a cleanup operation down there. So, there is now a sewer lateral to the property, so for future development, it's all ready to be hooked up to sewer.
They're using the sewer lateral there.
So, they are using that sewer lateral as their discharge point, and it's nice then because it's controlled, it's right there where they're treating the water, and...
It just comes to the treatment plant as if it's any other...
Yep, like any other place, and then it's all prepped to go when they're done with the remediation work for whoever moves in there next. They have sewer service.
All right, any other discussion for Jessica? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for City Council to authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement for a temporary discharge of treated groundwater to the City of Wenatchee's publicly-owned treatment works.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement with Coleman Oil for temporary discharge. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jessica.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Mr. Glenn DeVries. We're gonna start our housing work.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last year, the council adopted sweeping changes in our comprehensive plan for policy guidance to redo how the city looks at housing so that we could provide for a greater diversity of housing, and, but at the same time, have blended housing that works well with neighborhoods and provides neighborhoods predictability. And budget for a consulting exercise engaging urban designers and architects was set up, and we did a request for proposals and received really five really good proposals from qualified consultants. In review, City Review Dean took a look at the proposals, and one really was exceptional in meeting our needs, we believe, and that was Makers Architecture and Urban Design. These folks have done a lot of work in the city in the past and have done good work for the city. For example, the waterfront plan, which we're having great success in implementing... implementing. And one of the great features of their proposals is that we're getting their two top lead people doing the majority of the work in design and engaging stakeholders and the public in a very visual outreach and engaging process, which, which I think will be, would be really positive. And one of the things that they suggested in their proposal is we asked them to not just meet our request for proposal, but if they had some additional ideas, to put them forward, and they suggested a development economic feasibility analysis from a gentleman who specializes, specializes in that, does it on the west side but lives in Wenatchee, to take a look at the feasibility of how that, the design and development standards would work in Wenatchee, which we think was an excellent addition. So, staff is recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design in the amount of $141,100, and, for this year, and we would anticipate taking that through a public process with the Planning Commission, engaging the community, and bringing you suggested recommendations for new code changes this year.
I will say that Glenn came to the Finance Committee, this is slightly more than we had budgeted, and then, I, of course, blamed him for going over budget. He blamed us, because we were working on some projects downtown that he wants to study, so, he's learned well who to put the blame on.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design, LLP, in the amount of $141,100 for the development of design, development, and procedural standards to facilitate a greater diversity of housing types.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Harold to authorize the mayor's signature with a contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Planning to develop and design procedures to facilitate greater diversity of housing types. Discussion?
Glenn is, where's their home offices? Where do they operate from?
On the, on the west side, and I believe in Seattle.
Seattle, okay.
If I might, I sat in on the review of the request for proposals or the qualifications, and this, this firm is, is well-known for, they're really suited well for this project, and we get their two principals themselves working on it. And they have, particularly the person who's founded the business has a tremendous experience in housing and housing types and, and design standards.
Good. Any other questions for Glenn? All right, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Glenn.
Thank you.
Mr. Leonard, Regional Water Redundancy Study. The last pit was dry, huh?
Yeah. Redundancies, we have to keep drilling more holes.
Yeah, right. It seems redundant, doesn't it? So, in, yeah, this is for the redundancy study for the next regional water source. So, in 2013, the Regional Water Board members, PUD, East Wenatchee Water District, and the city decided we need to start looking for a redundant source location. And through that effort, we ended up looking at water quality, different factors, our other sources on the Dulles County side of the river, so redundancy as far as location being on this side of the river, so we didn't have river crossings. Water quality is kind of the big, the big one. Are we have really good water? Our quality is really good up in our East Bank Aquifer where we currently pump, where we only have to add chlorine, so we wanted to find something consistent with that. So, through that effort, ended up, you guys know, at the Rock Island Dam down on the PUD-owned property on this side of the river, above the Rock Island Dam, which was, looked to be better quality water than what we had, so we, last summer, drilled a 10-inch well, or 12-inch well, thinking this is gonna be it. Drilled it, we didn't find much water, so that's not our next source location. So, we've relooked at some different things, and we don't want to give up completely on this site yet. We'd like to drill a few more wells. We're not gonna go with the 12-inch diameter well. We're proposing going with 8-inch diameter wells, which are more common for a typical homeowner well, which we have more drillers that are available to do that. So, these wells, if they end up finding, if we end up finding enough water for a next source, these would be monitoring wells that we would need anyways through the project. So, you know, we're not gonna, with these wells, if we do find a good aquifer, we're still gonna end up having to drill a bigger well to test the, the capacity of that aquifer a little more, but with these three wells, our engineers think they'll be able to use the geophysical tools to really identify that aquifer, to figure out the capacity without having that larger well. So, we're, you know, we're a few years into this, into this project since 2013, it's been an ongoing thing, so we're hoping, just to put it in perspective, I was looking back at the last regional, when the regional water site was first, was built, that took about a 10-year planning process, so we're, we're working our way up close to that already, but hopefully, by 2023, we'll maybe have something. So, this is to authorize a supplement with RH2 for about $160,000. So, RH2 is gonna hire a subconsultant to do the well drilling for these test wells.
Matt, didn't you say in that area, there was other people that are finding water?
Yeah, so the PUD has their wells that they use to cool some components on the dam and for the dams, and they have good capacity in those. They're not as good as we need, but they have decent capacity, and then Alcoa has really, as wells just upstream that are, have a lot of capacity, so, and we feel like there's similar characteristics where it's recharged by the river, kind of like we currently have, so, we just need to find that, that rock pocket where we can pull that material from.
So, Matt, not to jinx the project, because I really hope that we find water, but do we have any other locations that we're looking at in case we don't find water?
We do, but the other locations unfortunately are looking, looking like they're gonna require some water, water treatment, which, so, but we do, there, I mean, if, there was about 15, I think, locations that were studied when that, when this initial, before we started drilling and decided on this spot, so there is other locations, but there's just the water quality isn't as good, or they're on the other side of the river.
I would articulate as we're trying to hit a home run, because if we can find it on that side of the river, right now, you know, it comes up from Rocky Reach on the east side, crosses over the bridge, so we're hoping to find one on this side that doesn't have to cross over a bridge, so that if somehow the bridge went down, we would have water on our side, and so, we're really trying to stay there and find the spot where it's cheapest to get it up, but also maintains the quality of the water, because when you start treating it a lot, and then you mix it with our waters, those...
It'd have some issues.
The science people tell me, so we're really trying to find the home run spot, and...
Yeah, the long-term costs of treatment really add up versus...
If we don't hit the home run spot, which we'll know soon, then we'll go look for something that's more like a double, right? We'll be able to provide more water to us, but...
Yeah, we're excited about this, this spot for sure.
Well, I know we're gonna find it.
Matt, what, you said that the...
Make a motion to find water.
A water rich?
Water rich.
The first well, you were getting a little less than, I don't know how much...
About 300 gallons a minute.
What, what is the...
We need over 1,000.
1,000, okay, so you're, you're a long ways from that.
We're a long way there. You know, perfect batting average, average.
All right, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign Supplement Number 3 with RH2 for the Regional Water Redundancy Study Project Number 1302.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markhart to authorize the mayor's signature on Supplement Number 3 with RH2 for Regional Water Redundancy Study Project 1302. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Matt.
Thank you.
Steve King, Opportunity Zone Application. Educate us on tax reform.
I need some help with that. Evening, Mayor and Council. I have a map we'll bring up really quick. So, at the, let's see if I can get this down here. At the end of 2017, the federal government passed the Tax Act, and it created a tax credit system effectively, where capital gains, where companies or individuals could reinvest their capital gains when they had a capital gain from selling assets or stock, into funds, which then would be distributed into qualifying low-income census tracts. This is a replacement to the former Newmarket Tax Credit Program, and we investigated it a couple times using Newmarket Tax Credits, and it never came together. This program is supposed to be a lot more capital, or have much higher capitalization, upwards of potentially $6 trillion over the next nine years, and they get distributed into a limited number of census tracts throughout the country. The governor's office has a responsibility of designating census tracts, up to 139 in Washington State, that would be qualified to the Department of Treasury, and so, each county gets, gets to designate a certain number of tracts. It turns out, since Shalane County only has seven qualifying census tracts, they only get to designate one for Shalane County. Port of Shalane County has that obligation or opportunity to do that, and they have to get the blessing of the Shalane County Commissioners. So, this week, the Port of Shalane County chose to designate our downtown census tract, which is the northerly one here shown on the map. It basically goes from Fifth Street down to Peachy, and then there's a little leg of it that goes down towards the George Sull Bridge.
In our package, it's the middle one, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, the middle one. And so, the Port of Shalane County designated that, the Shalane County Commissioners embraced that designation, and so, we're here tonight to request authorization to apply for the South Wenatchee Track, which goes from Peachy Street South down to Apple Yard, and then we'll also bring in, and, and what they call a contiguous track, it doesn't quite meet the qualifications, but it's eligible if it's contiguous, which would be the Malaga Track, and that's pretty much all of South Shalane County, which goes all the way down to Alcoa. So, we're doing that in partnership with Shalane County with their support, and effectively, if we're successful, this will allow for investment in private projects in these, in these qualifying areas. The nice thing is, is regardless, we'll have the downtown track, and one of the reasons for that is that we have a lot of projects, or several projects, that are ready to go, including housing. And so, even if we only get the downtown track, we'll have some projects to, to apply for these funding, these funds.
So, the, the Port of Shalane County is doing the application for the one that they, as the Associate Development Group is making, and then we would be doing the competitive ones?
Yes.
Are, are those due at the same time on Monday that the other one is?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, have a nice weekend. And are we providing a, a letter of support to the Port of Shalane's nomination as well as Shalane County?
We, we haven't drafted, we certainly could, it's not necessary, their application is really simple. It's just designate a number and a few lines, there's really no application part to it. We are actually using that Port of Shalane County designation to help leverage the interest and create that three-track zone, make it, I think it's gonna be a very competitive application.
There was a lot of discussion this week amongst port folks and the city and the county as to, one of them gets the, appointed from the port, and which one do you pick? And there was a lot of discussion about picking the Kashmir one, there was some talk about picking the South Wenatchee one. You couldn't pick the Alcoa one by itself, because it's the wrong color, it's green and not blue. And so, we made a point for picking the downtown track, because we have projects that are ready to go, and we know which ones those might be, and so, at the end of the day, thanks to some help from other folks in the community, they actually picked the downtown one, but part of picking the downtown one, as we said, I got Steve working this weekend, is we would make the competitive for South Wenatchee and try to bring the Alcoa track in on a competitive one. So, part of the handshake agreement was if you picked the downtown one, we will write the grant for the South Wenatchee and bring the Alcoa one in, and that's the one the port ultimately did, so, Steve gets to write a grant over the weekend to try to help with that, and so, I think it worked out well for us. And who knows the mechanism for how this is gonna work, right? I don't, someone's gonna drop in with a parachute full of cash for us, it's gotta be private into private deals, we can help facilitate, but there's now a second deal that came up today that might, so we've got now two deals that are close and ready for, so, we'll, we'll see. But, you don't, you can't swim until you jump in the water, right? So, we're, we're in the water.
Steve, is there any, any way to get an idea how much this might generate for, or is this just kind of, we throw it out and, again, we build a they-will-come kind of deal? Well, so, the Department of Treasury has to write the rules for the capital gains part of it, but effectively, the principle is, is if, if people invest their gains, it's kind of like a 1031 exchange, if they invest their gains over a certain period of time, then the basis changes, so they actually save money, and they share in those savings, which then drives, plus you get interest, and they get interest on those, on all that money set aside, so, that gets distributed out to probably community development financial institutions, that then we, then private folks would apply for a project that, you know, and they would argue, this'll, this'll raise the, raise the boat, the tide for all boats in this census tract.
So, it's, it's a way to get basically bigger investments into rural tracts that have the low, not the poverty rates, but lower income census tracts.
Lower income, poverty, you know, lack of job opportunities, food desert, all those social issues play into it, and of course, our south, we have our South Wenatchee Action Plan, which is our huge help at this point. We also have, you know, the downtown plan, even the waterfront plan, all these, all these efforts in the past are gonna flow right into that grant application, making it a little easier to put together a compelling story.
Well, it sounds like you have some interest with the downtown ones. Do you have any interest from private investors in, in the South Wenatchee area?
There's a couple...
That you know of, I mean...
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, the, the South Wenatchee Plan identified some opportunity sites, for example, Wilbur Ellis has a really underutilized site, but we haven't had any, any movement in terms of, let's go, unless we're gonna redevelop this site, that, all the interest is in downtown.
Okay.
There is the Catholic Family Project.
Oh, yes.
They approached us and said, we certainly hope you're submitting our tract, because it could benefit our project that they're building, that they want to build on the old Viewdale site.
Yeah, so, so, the, the, I don't know how much the Catholic, is it a $3 million?
15 million.
15 million, and they just got 2 million from the state, through the stuff we looked at on the internet through Commerce.
Yes.
And so, as they're putting together a package, if they get a low, low interest rate loan through this program for, you know, 2% for whatever, that might be enough to get the math to work where they can build units, right? It might actually work on Widener's project, right? He might be able to, for workforce housing, to be able to get a low interest rate loan, might be enough to get that one to the finish line. So, when you think of, you know, ready projects, we got a couple that are close, there's not a ready project, you know, in Malaga, and you're not gonna go build a park with it, right? So, there's certain reasons why it's fitting these tracts a little bit better, I think.
Right, any questions for Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for the City Council to authorize mayor and staff to make application for Opportunity Zone designations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Bailey to authorize the mayor and staff to make applications for Opportunity Zone designations. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we've got two public hearings. Do you guys need a break, or should we keep going? We all good?
Let's roll.
Okay, let's roll through them. So, first public hearing is regarding interim control and mining. For public hearings, we'll hear from staff first, we'll turn it over to the public, and then back over to the council for any action, specifically with this first one, because most of this work's gonna be done at the Planning Commission level. We will accept public comment, but I just ask that you keep it fairly brief, but it's a public hearing, we should take some public comment, but I would ask that you keep those comments brief, because I think most of the work will be, again, taking place with the Planning Commission, so. Stephen, Matt, how you guys doing?
Good.
Good, good evening.
Matt Parsons, Associate Planner. We're here with a resolution that is, brings findings and a work plan for kind of fulfillment of the requirements for the interim control that was passed under Ordinance 201804. for kind of fulfillment of the requirements for the interim control that was passed under ordinance twenty eighteen oh four back on February twenty-second. Under state law, within sixty days, required to hold a public hearing on the matter and adopt, like I said, findings and a work plan. This hearing was noticed on March eleventh in Wenatchee World. And interim control will last for twelve months. Basically, the work plan is very simple that's being proposed. It's kind of a three-stage process, working with the PUD, kind of figuring out, learning more about the issue of cryptocurrency mining, figuring out kind of what framework is best to address it. And then kind of the middle stage being developing code, public outreach, working with stakeholders, those sorts of things. Then finally, the third stage being kind of the code or policy adoption phase of the project. And staff recommends approval of this resolution.
And this will take place over the next year. So this is a one-year.
Correct.
Interim control.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, any discussion for either Stephen or Matt? All right, let's hear from many members of the audience that wish to address the council on this particular item. I'd ask to give your name and address for the record and really kind of limit it to three or four minutes if you could. Mark, you gonna come up?
My name is Mark Seaman, eleven eleven Okanagan Avenue. Mayor and council, thank you so much. I also want to thank staff as well as council and mayor for this moratorium that's been put into place. I think it's a smart and proactive effort to avoid potentially large catastrophic consequences. I have just a list of bulleted items. I'll just read those and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Land use and power use regulation will dictate how the city develops over the next five to ten years. However, it will have unintended consequences. The central business district prohibition, I would ask that the council also consider the option of conditional use permits or a threshold that limits electrical consumption. I understand the prohibition of storefronts and above-grade floors that can be used for other commercial uses. And maybe the allocation to below-grade or basement levels is appropriate. I also envision Wenatchee developing a warehouse district or an arts alley, particularly the two to three blocks that are north of Columbia Station. And going with the concept of basement level only, I would personally not really encourage that entire two to three blocks be allowed to be developed with cryptocurrency mining. I think there's better cultural advantages to having an arts alley or a warehouse district. There are mixed-use opportunities. I know there are business models out there for people to use cryptocurrency to help finance other business ventures, particularly if they're already involved in technology. And there is also a multiple dimensional aspect to electricity. Of course, there's the dollar value, but I think there's also a cultural value. Just for an example, you know, we know the cost of electricity per kilowatt. But I think if that is, if that electricity is put through a machine, whether it's a server, you're gonna get an output that will have certain value to it. If it's put through, let's say, musical instruments and you have a band playing, there's a cultural value that is part of that electrical energy. And so there's a resource allocation. You put something in, you get something out. There's a community investment in the electrical infrastructure that we have. And however that electricity is used, the community will get a return on it. So I encourage, you know, consideration of the council on what cryptocurrency mining is going to do, mostly on a cultural level. And I also want to mention that I am an employee of MJ Neil Associates. And we are the architects on the project for the mansion renovation, the old Jones and Jones funeral home. The partners of that project have been working for over six months, planning the renovation. Cryptocurrency mining was part of their business strategy to help finance it. And they have an application into the PUD. They submitted that, I think, in July. So they are in process and they're kind of in this gray area of being caught in this moratorium and the potential of not being able to do cryptocurrency mining in their new facility. And again, they are a high-tech company. There's two companies going into the Jones and Jones funeral home. They are technology-driven and they support approximately one hundred employees. They intend to use an innovative and integrated strategy for heating and cooling the building. There's an opportunity to capture heat that is part of the cryptocurrency mining and reallocate that to other areas of the building for heating during the winter time and snow melting outside on ramps and parking lots. They do plan on locating it in their basement, so it's off-alley. It is not at street front level. They have invested significant time, effort, and money into this plan. And they expect to spend close to two point five five million dollars on this renovation. So the KJD Partners, they're the owners of the mansion. They would like to encourage the council to find a path that would allow them to continue on their process that they've been on with this renovation. And that could be either through an amendment or just the understanding that they are kind of caught in the middle of this process where they've been working for months to make this happen. They've been willing to go out on a limb to purchase this building that's been sitting vacant for ten years. So they just, they would like to ask for your support on helping this venture stay moving forward. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
So I think Glenn, I guess get it to the planning commission as you go through the normal to talk about this idea that once we come out of the moratorium or the interim controls, that whether or not basement use, because we currently are taking it out of the central business district in its entirety and only allowing it in the industrial zones. So I think they're asking during this process if we could relook at the central business district and allow it in the basements of those from a land use perspective. How's that?
Yes, well, my understanding is there is a significant concern about being in the central business district, taking away storefront space for cryptocurrency mining. But I think there are opportunities, particularly in the basement levels.
And I agree with you, quite frankly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thanks, Mark. Anybody else wish to address the council on the work plan for the cryptocurrency? Seeing none, I will turn over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to adopt the findings and work plan as incorporated in resolution number two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, continuing the interim official control on cryptocurrency mining operations in the city of Wenatchee as adopted under ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero four.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Markart to adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, continuing the interim official controls on cryptocurrency in the city of Wenatchee as adopted by ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero four. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And our last item this evening, which is a public hearing, is regarding the city of Wenatchee Capital Facilities Plan. Stephen, how are you?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, this evening is a revision to the city's capital facilities plan. So on February twenty-second of this year, ordinance, or a resolution ordinance was adopted amending the city's six-year transportation improvement plan. And that is a referenced and item in the capital facilities plan as far as its date and ordinance number. And so before you is an ordinance, a resolution number two thousand eighteen dash fourteen that would amend the city's capital facilities plan to update that date and ordinance number reference. This planning commission has held a public hearing and has recommended unanimously to approve this change to the capital facilities plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is this our once-a-year amendment to our comprehensive plan? I was, I was reading it today. It's not, it's not a budget amendment.
Correct.
So this would be our once-a-year.
This is.
Comprehensive plan amendment.
An amendment recommended by legal counsel to the city.
So we won't be doing any more comprehensive plan amendments during this year?
I don't know. That's a good question. I agree.
I was reading it this afternoon. It's why I brought it up because I'm kind of in the same.
You've got him talking over there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I really have, whether we're going to adapt anything this year. Most likely not, given that our housing study and other projects that we're working on will not be completed by the end of this year.
Glenn?
This was advised by AWC legal counsel to take this action.
All right.
Your comment, Mark, is it?
You can amend your comprehensive plan once a year.
This is March, so by the time we get to November.
There are exceptions for capital facility plans and those deal with, at the time you do it, coincident either with a budget adoption or a budget revision. Or in this case, a sub-area plan as well. That's not what we're doing.
Okay. All right, any other questions for staff? If not, I turn over any member of the audience that wishes to address the city council on the update of the Wenatchee Capital Facilities Plan. Seeing no one who's willing to comment on the matter, I'll turn it over to their council for their action.
Well, your honor, I move that we approve resolution number two thousand eighteen dash fourteen, adopting minor amendments to the city of Wenatchee Capital Facilities Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harold to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash fourteen, adopting minor amendments to the city of Wenatchee Capital Facilities Plan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report. I've got two or three quick items. First, we've got a new utilities manager, Rob Jammerman. Rob, stand up, say hi. We got Rob. We stole him from the city of Kirkland. He only had thirty years over there. Come over to the good side.
But after just thirty years.
Yeah, no, he had to keep going. So we're excited to have him. Welcome. This is his first week at work, so. Sold a house, bought a house and make the Wenatchee his home. So we're excited to have him. We had a meeting regarding the old station sewer on Tuesday, on a set. Very well attended. I would say overall, more excitement this time than the last time when we tried to do an LID. I think folks are relatively excited about getting a sewer line. I think they're happy with the reduction in fees to hook up quickly. They want a payment plan and they don't want to join the city limits of the city of Wenatchee. But that's not part of the deal. So if the other three are good enough, I think we're gonna get quite a few hookups, so. Matt's on an aggressive schedule, Matt and his team to, he said it publicly, that it would all be in the ground by the end of November of two thousand eighteen. So we have a beer on that one. I don't know whether he's gonna get it done that fast, but.
So we do use the waiver of annexation protest agreements with folks that are outside.
They all know it's coming.
And we make sure that it's notarized?
Yep, whatever Tammy, they give Tammy the authority.
They had a notary at the meeting, just in case.
So they are all signing no protests and.
Rotary stamps and holsters.
So we are gonna probably have to put together a financing option for some of the folks. And I think we had enough people. The media indicated that financing the city's portion, that eight thousand dollar hookup fee, that we'd be willing to do that. So Brad and the team will be putting something together. But it sounds like way more positive than a twenty thousand dollar LID, which was a proposal ten or twelve years ago, so. And no one threw anything at us. And I had to assist a Rob who said it was a good meeting. He's been to one in Kirkland, that I'm sure. So he thought it was okay, so.
There we go.
Yep. Anything else, Allison, for the good of the order?
Busy, busy. We sent you out a couple of sign-ups. So United Ways bringing diversity training. That will be really wonderful diversity training. There are scholarships available for that. And then the Flywheel Conference we sent out to you. This is, this conference is a huge Herculean effort to bring companies here who are competing for funds. They're also bringing some really amazing speakers. And Jenny with Guata is wanting to make sure that the Performing Arts Center is packed that day. So that day is nine to four. There's an evening session over at the BPOE Center.
April.
April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, which is a Thursday. So we, through one of our funds, contributed some money to Flywheel. So we have six tickets available. But any members of the council that want to go, if you want to spend your nine to four there, we will either use one of our free tickets or pay for you guys. Department heads can go if they want to go. I'd even drop down a level if there's people that think it's real important. It's gonna be a great day. A lot of really smart people in the room. So if anyone's interested, just let us know and we'll come up with some money to get us in the, in the room. Howard Wright is one of the lead speakers who founded the Space Needle and still owns the Space Needle and is big in hospitality and. So it's gonna be a great day. Anything else, council members? Anything for the good of the order?
April, April third, from two to four. There will be an active shooter training at the Wenatchee Convention Center. Officer Corey Bernash.
I'm glad you used the term training because if we were gonna advertise the active shooter.
Whatever. Anyway, you're invited to join us. It's free of charge. It's something that I went to him to put together for our staff because I just feel like it's, you can never be too prepared if you can prepare for such an event. But anyone that is interested, you're more than welcome to join us.
Okay. So next week, no meeting. The week after, no meeting. So we visit again in regular session on Thursday, the tenth, eleventh.
April twelfth.
April twelfth.
And also we have officer commissioning on Monday at two thirty here in council.
Two new officers to swear in, the young lady and then the transfer from Nebraska. So two for Monday. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Go Zags. Where's Vern?